Thanks for joining us again. Dave, we had a great talk with Rock Springs Council Lord Four. And now we're going to talk to the Sweetwater County Commissioner candidates and see what they have to say. We hope all of them will be able to join. And we have a round of questions that we're going to ask. And we also encourage you, our readers, to submit questions as we go along through Election 2020, and we'll add those to our next forum. Dave, why don't you explain how we're going to do this?
Yeah, well, you know, again, we had a difficult time trying to find a venue to actually pull off these forums in person. We obviously, for safety reasons, didn't want to involve too many people in one location. So we decided this might be an easier format to do that. We're going to have the same rules set up as we did last night. The candidates will get three minutes to do an introductory statement, and then we'll ask them five questions. I'll have 90 seconds to answer. And then they'll have a little two-minute outro to sort of explain to you why they feel like they're the best candidate for the position. So we encourage you to check out SweetwaterNow.com. We have our Election 2020 page up with a lot of profiles on there. And this is just a little bit of a caveat to some of that so that the candidates can answer some questions and give you their thoughts on some specific subjects.
All right, let's get started.
We'd like to welcome everybody to Sweetwater Now's continuing coverage of Election 2020. Tonight, we're going to be conducting the Sweetwater County Commissioners Forum, and we'd like to welcome the candidates who have joined us tonight on this Zoom meeting. It's Joe Barbuto is here with us, Lauren Schoenfeld, Mary Tomlin's here, and Dave Gray. There are a couple other candidates, Mark Peterson and Wally Johnson, who have not joined us quite yet at the beginning, but if they happen to jump on, we'll certainly include them in our questions and answer period. I'm Dave Aronbell, along with Gary Collins, and just want to review some of the rules for the candidates here just very quickly. We're going to give each of you three minutes, up to three minutes, to give an opening statement. You can talk about your platforms, who you are, your background, anything you'd like to talk about in those three minutes. After that period, we are going to give each of the candidates five questions. And these same five questions will be asked to everybody. You'll each have 90 seconds to answer each question. We have set up a little bit of a timer here for you, so when we get to within 10 seconds of the 90-second limit, you're going to hear this. And then, and when we hit the 90-second mark, you'll hear this sound. And that'll be an indication for you to stop speaking on that particular subject. So if everybody's ready to go, I think we'll just go ahead and get this started. Let's see, why don't we go ahead and start with Joe Barbuto? Go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you, guys. I'm pleased to be a part of this virtual forum. This is a first for me. I'm grateful to Sweetwater Now for hosting the event. And of course, I'd like to welcome and thank those who are going to be tuning in later online to watch this. This is a difficult time for Sweetwater County, and it's going to become even more difficult in the coming months and years. Revenues are down, traditional industries in the region are in decline, and people are losing their jobs and livelihoods. There's not a candidate on this panel who could disagree with that assessment. But perhaps most worried of some of all is that there's no plan in place for how our county is going to deal with these changes. We can't just react. We can't hope there's another boom. We have to create a plan for our future, for what we want this county to look like over the next five, 10, 20 years and beyond. And nobody else is going to do that for us. And that's the primary reason I'm in this race. I want to lead an effort to create a strategic plan for Sweetwater County. Let's bring stakeholders from across the county. This can't just be an internal project. Let's bring stakeholders together, talk about the issues we're facing, assess our opportunities and obstacles, and develop goals and a comprehensive framework for the future. You know, as a legislator, during my work in the nonprofit sector, or now in the work I'm doing as a consultant, I've always strived to bring people together, facilitate productive conversations, build consensus, and move forward with good ideas that address the issues at hand. I want to put that experience and those skills to work for this county and the people who live here. I want folks from communities across the county, from Bear Oil to McKinnon, to be a part of the process. And I want a bright future for Sweetwater County. My family's here. They've been here for five generations, and I want to make sure that the next five generations can stay here and have the same opportunity, too. And we can get there, but we've got to do it together. Again, thank you, guys, for hosting us tonight, and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
All right, thank you very much, Joe. Next up, we'll hear from Lauren Schoenfeld. Lauren, you have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lauren Schoenfeld. Welcome to this evening. I'm very excited to be here. I live in Rock Springs with my husband, Paul, our five-year-old daughter, and his three kiddos. And I've been a lifetime resident of Sweetwater County. Last July, I was honored to be appointed to fill a vacancy on the Board of County Commissioners. And since then, I've been working hard with my fellow electeds and throughout our community to ensure Sweetwater County is the best possible position during this very difficult time. I've jumped at every opportunity to push for strong and diverse economic development, sound and fiscally conservative decisions, and a community that collaborates to be strong and viable. If we're going to build a strong, resilient, and diverse community, we need leaders who work together to find solutions to the challenges we face. I bring a fresh, action-oriented, and deeply involved voice to our county's leadership. I support policies that ensure the core of our community, the hardworking men and women who are meeting our community needs. I'm truly Sweetwater County grown. Growing up in Farsen gave me a great understanding of what rural Wyoming has to offer. My career experiences in law enforcement, probation and parole, executive leadership at one of the county's largest nonprofit organizations, and now industry, has given me a strong and diverse leadership, nonprofit budgeting, criminal justice system experience, and strategic planning, which has also given me a fresh perspective. I'm currently active throughout our county and state as a chairperson for the Wyoming State Broadband Council, an appointee to the State of Wyoming Legislative Broadband Task Force, the Southwestern Wyoming Mining and Manufacturing Executive Leadership Team, the Wyoming Community Foundation Local Board, the Sweetwater County Economic Development Coalition, and the Sweetwater County Republican Party. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to represent Wyoming as a delegate to the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women and speak at a parallel event regarding bridging the technology gap between urban and rural communities. We have great opportunities with economic development and diversification alongside with supporting our current industries throughout the county. I'm deeply connected throughout our community and state, and I'm not afraid to dig in and get my hands dirty. There's also a great opportunity to continue with strategic and long-term planning for our county. I have recently begun this process with my fellow commissioners and look forward to working with our employees, stakeholders, and our community members so we can take our county planning and development to a whole new level. I expect this process will take a while to complete, and it will be an ongoing plan, but it will assist us with facility and asset maintenance, conserving and slimming down our budget, effectively planning projects, and creating a cohesive team focus throughout the different departments to best utilize the expertise and experience that we have and act responsibly with our tax dollars. I'm looking forward to this forum tonight, and I thank everyone for tuning in.
All right, thank you very much, Lauren. And next up, we will hear from Dave Gray. Dave, you have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Well, first of all, thanks to Sweetwater Now and the sponsors for allowing the forum to happen. I'd like people to know a little bit about me, for those people that don't know me. I first moved to Sweetwater County in 1993 as a sergeant for the Wyoming Highway Patrol and was promoted to lieutenant here as well. From 2003 to 2007, I was sheriff of Sweetwater County. I was employed in, after 2007, I was employed in the oil and gas industry in the county as a health and safety analyst from 2007 until 2019. I was involved with the Rock Springs Soccer Association, United Way Assessment Teams. I was on the Governor's Council for impaired driving. I was on the Wyoming Judicial Nomination Commission, and I currently serve on the Wyoming Board of Parole. And for the period from 2018 to 2020, June, I was chairman of the Board of Parole. I've noticed that, you know, there's been a lot of changes in Sweetwater County in less than six months, and they had me concerned. The company that I was working for was bought out by another oil and gas company. Since then, I believe Jonah Oil and Gas has filed bankruptcy. One of the companies that bought the Wamsetor asset from the company I worked for has also filed bankruptcy. 150 workers at one of the Trona mines were laid off, and I'm concerned for the future of Sweetwater County. This is my home, and I want to do what I can to change that. With coronavirus, COVID-19, along with that came a lot of, in my opinion, opportunity. There's changes across the nation, and I think that Wyoming can actually benefit from those changes. We're a community, whether it's Wyoming or Sweetwater County, we're a community of caring and loving people that still respect our law enforcement and still love our law enforcement. And that kind of makes me proud to be retired from that industry. I think that gives us an opportunity where there's changes in areas where there are no longer going to fund police departments, where people will be afraid. We can give them a place out here where they can bring their businesses, where we can bring their people, and they'll feel safe. So that's what brings me to this campaign. And I guess if anybody needs any additional information on my background, I'd be more than happy to answer it. I am a Democrat. I'm a very conservative Democrat. If you want a coastal Democrat, you're going to have to go to the coast to find one, because I'm not one of them.
Okay, thank you very much, Dave. We appreciate that. And finally, we will hear now from Mary Tomlin. Mary, go ahead and give a short three-minute opening statement.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to be on the panel tonight. I appreciate that very much, since we're not able to get out very much with COVID. I'm a Wyoming native, been to Sweetwater County my entire life, raised on a ranch up on the Green River. Filled us with seven children, went to a one-room school, had some very unique opportunities with parents who were really committed and loved the land and their way of life. And they've carried that forward, you know, all of us in loving the land, and probably led to my passion to be so involved as I have been for the last 21 years with the Conservation District. So actually, I have been doing the work for the county for a long time. It's just behind, in a lower level, what people didn't really realize. I've been a cooperator since the Jack Moro Hills Plan was started, fighting to maintain multiple use, our access, and all the things that we love about our natural resources, especially our tax base and the funding, and has provided such a wonderful way of life for all of us. So it's become my passion to fight for this way of life, and the fight is going to get harder now that so many changes and things are happening that are going to affect our tax base and our economies and our budgets and all of those things. About 12 years ago, I helped co-found a coalition of local governments, five counties, Uennes, Sweetwater, Sublet, Lincoln, part of Carbon. We meet once a month with a legal and technical team. We talk about every plan that's proposed in this county. We have a team onboard to write legally defensible and scientifically credible comments to defend this way of life that I just believe is so vital. And I just have committed to trying to do everything I can to keep a wonderful way of life that we have enjoyed in Sweetwater County for so long. Another thing that we're working very hard on, Wally Johnson is also working on this, went to the Public Service Commission. We're not going to step aside and let Rocky Mountain Power tell us to close our coal-fired power plants in our coal mines. We are fighting with five counties to find a way to maintain this way of life and a reliable power source for the nation. It is shaky enough as it is now. Green power might be wonderful, but it's not going to carry us. And so through this coalition, we are working very, very hard to find a way to keep our coal mines going and to keep a good supply of power for the country. Also, as part of my duties, I was appointed to Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative, which was an initiative to prevent, protect habitat and do improvements on the land for wildlife and agriculture because of the intense energy development in southwest Wyoming. I was appointed, I was elected two terms as chairman. I still serve on that board with all of the elected officials in the state that deal with natural resources, head of the BLM, game and fish, Forest Service. Anyway, we approve projects all over the southwest Wyoming for wildlife and for agriculture. Another opportunity I had in the past was to be appointed to Cynthia Lummis's Treasurers Investment.
Your time is up, Mary.
Okay, I served on that seven years. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. We appreciate that. And now we're going to move on to the question and answer, well, not really answer, just the question portion of the forum. And Gary's going to go ahead and lead us out here.
Yeah, and so, Joe, I'm going to start with you. I'm going to ask each of you the same question, but, Joe, what do you believe is the biggest issue facing Sweetwater County right now?
By far, it's the state of our economy and the future of our economy right now. As has been said multiple times in opening statements, things are changing rapidly. We have the supply, but we don't control the demand. And so we need to start looking at what can we do to create new revenue? What can we do, more importantly, to bring jobs in Sweetwater County? What I'm advocating for, and I've heard some others mention here this evening already, is a strategic plan. Any good organization, any good business, anybody who wants to succeed puts in place a strategic plan. If we expect businesses to want to come to Sweetwater County, it's no different than if we wanted somebody to invest in our business. You're not going to put your money into a company that doesn't have a plan, and businesses aren't going to want to relocate to a community that doesn't have a strategic plan. That's the bottom line, and it can't be an internal process. It has to be something that brings in people from across the county, stakeholders in every area of concern from multiple sectors. We've been saying in this campaign, big ideas for a big county. There are a lot of good ideas out there, but we're not going to know what they are unless we go out there and get them. And we can do that. This is a county with a population size that makes accessibility to government a lot more possible than other places, so we should take advantage of that. But just go back to that original point, the thing that we need to be hyper-focused on more than anything else right now is creating a plan for what we want this county to look like economically in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years.
All right, thank you, Joe. Mary, same question to you. What is the biggest issue facing Sweetwater County right now?
Economic pandemic. A lot of it's caused by pandemic, but it's also caused by international issues with oil and gas and with Trona, and some of the downturn in our tax base in revenues. It's going to be difficult to try to make up a 30% shortfall. But I do think, you know, as Joe said, I think we have opportunities. We have been, through our coalition, we've been discussing an industrial complex similar to the one they have in Canada. We're on interstate, we're on a railroad, we have a lot of natural resources, are the ways that we can pull industries together to create opportunities. Wyoming is a great state for business opportunities. So I see that as one of the ways that we could help diversify and energize local economy.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, same question to you. What is the biggest issue facing Sweetwater County right now?
I believe the biggest issue facing Sweetwater County right now is the economy that we're living in. This is due to COVID-19, the downturn in coal, the issues with Rocky Mountain Power and potentials of clean energy, the oil and gas industry, and of course, some overseas issues with trading and everything else. Working with the Sweetwater County Economic Development Coalition, we've really made some awesome strides in the past few months. We've really started to focus, so I'm not sure, I'm going to go back up just really quickly, because I don't have a lot of time to answer this, but we've made some significant changes with the Economic Development Coalition in the past six months. And we've really come a long ways in those six months. We've moved to under the county and have given Kayla, our economic development specialist, a lot of additional resources and support that she needed. And so I think to continue to work through these issues, we have some studies that are going on right now to find out where we can diversify our economy, what would be a good fit. We live on I-80, we have access to rail, we have some great other things going on that really supports some good diverse economic opportunities. I also think economic development is such, it's talked upon, but it's really such a big thing. It comes everything and encompasses everything from our healthcare to our schools, to opportunities within businesses, bringing new businesses in the existing businesses, as well as beautification and ensuring that our community looks great. So when people come in, they want to stay and bring their businesses here. So I think that we could go on and on for quite a while about economic development, have full-day conversations about it. I think that that's probably the key, along with some strategic planning to help us move forward in the right direction.
All right, thank you for that. Dave, same question. What is the biggest issue facing Sweetwater County right now?
Well, I think clearly it's the current economic state, whether it's problems that are created because of the coronavirus or other problems, it's our economic state. We have a state in the Union, it's Oregon and Washington, that are preventing Wamson Coal from being shipped overseas, and I think that needs to stop. We don't prevent their lumber from coming across the state of Wyoming. We currently have a emissions testing that's being done in northeastern Wyoming. I'd like to drag that down here to southwestern Wyoming and start putting emissions tests on our facility here. When you look at Jim Bridger Power Plant, and you look at the emissions that are put out, the way that they run their Trona liquor up through the exhaust, it comes out quite clear. You'll have steam for maybe a couple hundred yards, and then it's blue sky. I don't believe that green power is a solution either. For those people that haven't been up to look at the solar panel field, for those people that haven't been over to Arlington to see what it looks like when we have wind power, go over and have a look at it. I don't want Sweetwater County to look like an airplane trying to take off. The western states seem to be happy with trying to get green power. I want to get them good, clean power that's powered by coal.
So, all right, Mary, so I'm going to give you the second question. First, share your thoughts on the Occidental Land Purchase being considered by the state of Wyoming, and we'd like to know whether you think it's a good or a bad idea.
Well, thank you. I love that question. I participated through Zoom meeting with the State Land Investment Board for their two-and-a-half-hour public meeting, explained the analysis that they had done. And I just think it's a no-brainer. I think everybody says the state economy is down now. It's not a good time to try to invest in something. It's a perfect time to invest in this. The Mineral Trust Fund, they would use 30% of it, but by law, they can use 70% of it. That money cannot be used for budget shortfalls. So it's a perfect time to use. The return on the investment would be 7.25% with the Trona. Without the Trona included in that package, it would be over 11%. The state has done due diligence as far as analyzing this proposal. They've submitted a bid, and they've also contracted with Barclay Bank to do the economic analysis before they actually go final. So I just think it's a great opportunity. I would not want a foreign company to come in and take that land.
All right, thank you for that answer. And, Joe, to you, the same question. Share your thoughts on the Occidental Land Purchase being considered by the state of Wyoming, and whether you think this is a good or bad idea.
Well, I think, like a lot of folks, I'm not sure. I feel like I've been a little bit in the dark on the whole process, and there does need to be more clarity on what exactly is being proposed, what's going to be spent. Even though I know this is separate from the General Fund of the Legislature, I understand that, that this is becoming from the Mineral Trust Fund, it's a hard pill to swallow for a lot of folks to understand how we could spend this much money suddenly on land that obviously is not producing for the people who own it right now, and there's a reason they want to get rid of it. Now, all that said, I agree with Mary. I don't want to see private investment firms from overseas coming in and buying this land either. So I guess what I would ask for is just more information from the governor's office. A lot of individuals have been asking for that for the last several months, and we want consistency in what they're telling us, because we get information from Randall Luther that doesn't always line up with what the governor's telling us also. So I think that's the biggest deal with it right now, is let's get all the facts out there, let's understand this for what it is, and then maybe we can judge it on better merits.
Thank you, Joe. All right, Dave, same question. Share your thoughts on the Occidental Land Purchase being considered by the state of Wyoming, and whether you think it is a good or bad idea.
I think it's a good idea. I don't think there's anybody here that worked for Anadarko. I did. I've worked for them for 12 years, and they sold out to Occidental. Last year, I believe it was last year, I caught rumors from one of the land people that they had marked all of the property as no trespassing, all of the Anadarko properties, that's the land-grant properties. It concerned me to such a degree about losing that public access to public lands, because every other section would block off a BLM section. That I contacted a friend of mine, his name is Wally Johnson, and he cares about public lands, and I know that. Wally Johnson went to the governor of the state of Wyoming and told him what Anadarko was proposing, and the governor got ahold of the CEO of Anadarko, and they set that issue aside and went back to the way that it was. They still don't authorize people to trespass on Anadarko property, and it still is Anadarko property. At least it's marked that way. If it's in the hands of the state of Wyoming, it will guarantee public access to public lands, hopefully for the rest of eternity. This property down here is very important to the state or for the county because of tourism and the fact that they can play on an endlessly large playground.
All right, thank you, Dave. And Lauren, same question. Share your thoughts on the Occidental Land Purchase being considered by the state of Wyoming, and whether you think that is a good or bad idea.
Yes, thank you. I think that, as some of the other candidates have shared, this is the perfect time to invest in our economy. This package does allow for us to keep this property in state's hands. It allows us to keep public access to our public lands. The state has worked through a lot of the concerns that have been brought up to them and have really minimized them and explained to them. I think that we have a huge amount of opportunity to keep this property within our control at the state level and to ensure access to all of us, which I think is extremely important to most of us throughout this whole state of Wyoming. So I support this.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our third question. This is going to have two parts. Lauren, I'm going to start with you. When it comes to the county's expenses and their budget, we'd like to know, where would you make cuts? And then the part two was going to be, where do you see, where you might see the ability for economic expansion?
Absolutely. So we just completed the budget for this year, and as expressed in a few of the most recent meetings, I wasn't 100% pleased with what we turned out with. I think that we have a lot of opportunity to go through line item by line item and really look at what we're spending our tax dollars on. I think that that will come with the strategic planning and the development within the county, but I think that's a longer process. I really feel that we need to look at where the real needs are through each and every single line item, and I don't believe that that's happened in previous years. Can you repeat the second part of that?
Yeah, so it's just, where would you make cuts to the county's expenses to present a balanced budget? And then the next piece would be, and where can you see maybe the ability for economic expansion or diversification?
Well, I think a lot of that's also going to come through the strategic planning process. I think that we can utilize, better utilize, the expertise that we currently have within the county. We have people that have been there doing a great job for a very long time, and I think that as we build a team together and all work towards, you know, common goals, knowing what each other's goals are, we can really focus those expertise areas in the areas that they need to be. I also think that we can put more money into economic development and diversification once we start getting down some more information. We're really at a beginning stages in that process, and so I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with that and to see where it leads us, and, you know, partnering with all of our elected officials, all of our department heads, as well as the community members and our stakeholders.
All right, thank you. And so, Dave, I'm going to go to you next. So the same question, and this would be, you know, where do you believe that you see that you could make cuts to the county's expenses to present a balanced budget? And then as well, where do you see maybe some opportunities for economic expansion or diversification?
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I was a bit disappointed with the commission, the current commission did with the budget. I felt it was a little bit premature and acted on much quicker than they were forced to. I think that the budget process should be a two-year budget process, just like the state has, that we look at the current year, we prepare for the next year, and we also have a Plan A and a Plan B for the next year. But I'll tell you, when I was sheriff, when I first went into office, I ran on the platform that the previous sheriff had been sued too much. I, I ran on the platform that the previous sheriff had been sued too much. And I found a, I found an opportunity to save money and it was going from private insurance to what governmental insurances were available. We saved over $310,000 a month, or pardon me, a year by going to governmental insurance, one for facilities and one for liabilities. And as far as I know, that $310,000 saving has gone on since 2003. What opportunities are there? I think what a person has to do is they have to poke their nose, have to find out what business is like. But I, I truly believe that for too long, we have been duplicating services between the cities and the county, and that needs to stop. Uh, that was part of my platform when I ran before. It's still part of my plat, platform. We don't need redundant services in everything we do.
Thank you, Dave. Joe, uh, same question. When you look at the county's budget, you know, where do you believe that you see there could be cuts, um, to, to the budget to present a balanced budget amid the hard economic times that the county is facing? And then where might you see room for, um, expansion or economic diversification?
Uh, thanks for the question. Um, you know, I've been a part of developing very large budgets, over $3 billion in the case of the state of Wyoming and small budgets that were considerably smaller for local nonprofits, organizations and groups. But in every, every case, the same principles applied, regardless of the dollar amount you're working with. And first, you know, I, I believe a budget is a moral document, it's a reflection of a community's values. And you know, what do taxpayers in the county value, uh, we need to ask. So, uh, as a commissioner, that's something I'd like to do, and I'd like to do with any issue of importance, is take that out to the communities and have workshops and discussions about where they want to see dollars going. You know, next, I think you have to understand what services are being offered as a result of those tax dollars and how they're actually impacting the bigger picture. You know, for instance, um, it might be tempting to cut funding towards mental health and substance abuse programs, but when you're looking at a situation where a lot of folks could be losing their livelihoods in our county here in the coming months and years, well, you know, those services may be needed now more than ever. So maybe it makes sense to not make cuts there. Maybe it would. Uh, and then of course, you know, just visiting with county departments and the organizations who are, are receiving funds, uh, from the budget, understanding how they and their services are offered and impact the citizens is really crucial. You know, understanding those things, that every decision, whether it's adding to or cutting from the budget, has to have solid reasoning. And you have to be willing to make those difficult decisions, but it should be done with as much information and facts as you can gather. So I, and I see a lot of potential, you know, this is something that would be brought out from strategic planning too, I would hope, um, where we could expand economically. But I think there's a lot of potential in our public lands that we haven't utilized for recreational, outdoor, um, activities. That's a big industry in a lot of other states and a lot of other areas. And we have a really unique opportunity here because of our public land to maybe expand in that area and explore some new opportunities.
All right, Joe. Thank you. And Mary, uh, the same question. Uh, where would you make cuts to the county's expenses to present a balanced budget? Um, and also as part two, where do you see, uh, the ability for maybe some economic expansion or di- diversification?
Well, I think, uh, first you could start with the attrition, uh, what positions, uh, maybe are coming up that you could maybe not rehire, uh, offer some early buyouts perhaps? We could save some money there. Uh, honestly, I was a little bit disappointed this year that they didn't start to do a little bit of cutting this year so it wouldn't be so heavy next year, but that's neither here nor there. Commissioner Johnson did say that, uh, in his interview, that, uh, 40 jobs had been scaled back through attrition over the last 10 years that for a savings of 15 million for the county. That's significant. And I think we are sca, we are scaled back in this county and we have some great people, some really good things are happening. I see the roads are in good shape and the facilities, you know, things are in good shape. So I think, uh, we're coming into it with a strong position, but we will have to look at duplication of services, look at the budget, where can you combine things? And, and I think Joe has a good point. I mean, uh, if a city has a budget almost as much as a county, I mean, uh, what are some things that we could maybe, uh, share? And I saw that with that Wyoming landscape conservation initiative, as we got less money, we were actually able to do better and bigger projects because we consolidated, we, uh, shared our resources and, uh, everyone got on the board to do some, uh, really great things instead of a bunch of little things. And so that might be a great opportunity. That would also provide jobs maybe, uh, as we work to improve our county and the, and the cities.
All right. And we have two questions left and I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Okay. Uh, let's go ahead and, um, we'll start with Mary on this one as well. The fourth question is, Mary, what are your thoughts about the management plans for the greater Little Mountain area? And, uh, what could that mean for the future of the county?
Conservation district and that Wyoming landscape conservation initiative, as I just mentioned, uh, we were able to start focusing on bigger level projects, looking at a whole watershed, like the Greater Mountain, Little Mountain area. And, uh, I think there are opportunities there, but if you have existing oil and gas leases and, and they're not going to affect the view shed and it's done responsibly, I think you can't eliminate things that support our tax base. But at the same time, we have great opportunities there. I'm, I know, uh, Josh Corsi and the Millie Fanatics have done some great things with the Aspen, uh, uh, regeneration projects for, for hunters to increase the hunting capability for recreation. So it, it's just a great focus area for all of our, uh, resources and, uh, interests.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's go on to, uh, Lauren now. Uh, Lauren, again, what are your thoughts about the management plans for the greater Little Mountain area? And, uh, what can that mean for the future of the county?
Thank you for the question. Um, I believe that the greater Little Mountain area is, I mean, it's something that is a gem in our community. It's an asset that you can't find anywhere else in the world. And honestly, I think that we've done a really good job in the past of protecting that asset. I think we need to continue to move forward, um, with even more protection of that asset. I don't agree with, um, drilling or oil and gas. Uh, there's plenty of other areas that they could go. Um, I, I don't believe that that should be happening in our greater Little Mountain area. And I believe that we need to be very, um, be very strong, um, moving forward about that approach.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, Dave, you're up next. Uh, what are your thoughts about the management plans for the greater Little Mountain area? And what can that mean for the future of Sweetwater County?
Well, it's a area I've been down in, ended down in there. Uh, I think we've got a, I think we've got a great herd of elk and deer down there. Can it be drilled and can it be drilled appropriately? I've been in a lot of areas where drilling has been done and, uh, in areas that are perhaps more, uh, environmentally, uh, tender than what Little Mountain area is. I think that oil and gas can be done. Uh, if you look at, let's face it, if you're going to be in oil and gas, you gotta go where oil and gas is, you don't dry, you don't drill dry holes, right? Um, we've got two sections up, uh, by Jonah that has not been explored yet. That's two sections that I know of. And those are the only two that I know of that haven't been tapped already. Little Mountain area has never been tapped. I believe there are indications that there should be oil and gas down in that area. And I think it can be done, uh, responsibly. Uh, I mean, let's face it, if it's, if it's jobs or Little Mountain, I'd much rather provide jobs for people and do it in an economically and environmentally safe way, uh, than to leave it untapped.
All right. Thanks, Dave, for that answer. And, uh, finally, we'll go to Joe. Uh, Joe, what are your thoughts about the management plans for the greater Little Mountain area? And, uh, what can that mean for the future of Sweetwater County?
You know, first of all, I think that the, the greater Little Mountain, um, plan and the years that have led up to now have been a real success story. I think you've seen some, a real diverse coalition come together in support of protect, protecting, preserving and conserving, um, Little Mountain for a lot of its natural attributes that already have been discussed. And I think it's okay to say that there are areas that we're not going to drill, there are areas that we're not going to develop for energy, um, because they provide a natural resource, um, and a lot, and a, uh, and, and they provide to our county through their, their other natural resources, wildlife, wild places. And so, um, I think as we move forward and look at other areas of, um, environmental concern or other areas that we want to preserve or protect, um, that we can look at what's gone on at Little Mountain as a model for how we should approach this in the future. And in maybe some cases, it would be different. But maybe in some places, it would make more sense to, uh, to develop the land for energy production or mineral extraction. But I think, I think that the model that's been put in place through the Little Mountain Coalition in particular, has been a really good one and one that we should follow in the future. It's been something that they should follow all over the state and nation maybe, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. We appreciate that. Um, okay. Uh, candidates, our final question of the evening, and of course, we saved the $64 question for the last one. Uh, it's been on everybody's mind since March. And we'll go ahead and start with, uh, why don't we start with Dave on this one? Uh, Dave, how will Sweetwater County and the commission continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic moving forward?
Well, I have a lot of respect for our county health officer. I think Dr. Station does a really good job. I don't know that she's been asked about her opinion, but, uh, obviously she, she is a professional, she is in healthcare, and I would honor her opinion. Uh, I'm not a health professional, I'm not a doctor. Uh, you have to go to the people that know exactly what we have to do in order to protect our public. Have we been responsible with what we've done? And I, and I have to go back and look at what has happened to Sweetwater County in the six months that we've been looking at, uh, COVID-19. And I, and I have to say, based on the numbers, I, I, I believe we have been approaching it reasonably. Um, I think there's some things, I heard some concerns from employees about, uh, being exposed at work, and I'm concerned about that too. Like I say, I'm about health and safety. And, um, I think that there's ways that we can address situations electronically, uh, so that we don't have to have people come into the county building for whatever their needs are. Um, but I think, I think we have been responsible. I think that the board of commissioners has been responsible about how they have addressed it. Uh, their response, reply before was that it's a, it's, it's not required, it is recommended. And I believe that is probably fair for the county building.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. We appreciate that. Um, let's move on to Mary. Uh, Mary, how will Sweetwater County and the commission continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic?
Well, I think we have to get things opened up for our businesses, but we also have a personal responsibility as citizens to protect ourselves and, uh, our neighbors. And if we're at risk, then I think we should be more cognizant and take, uh, better care of ourselves. But on the other hand, uh, it, it really stresses me just what's happened to our local businesses. I mean, this is a total shutdown and, and it's devastating. We've survived SARS, MRSA, AIDS, um, all sorts of other, uh, types of situations. And this is not a politically correct thing to say, I'm afraid. This is an economic pandemic and it's probably more dangerous than, than the disease itself. I mean, yes, we have to be careful and I don't see anything wrong with the way the, the county is handling it, but really, we have to get back in business. We have to get back to business.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, Joe, um, your thoughts about, uh, how Sweetwater County and the commission can continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic?
You know, I think when you guys first asked this question in the written, in the written questionnaire we did earlier on, um, the outcomes were much different. There was a low number of cases and that seemed like a sign that COVID-19 was being handled well in Sweetwater County. Uh, since then, we know there have been several new cases, um, and including deaths. And so the outcomes have changed considerably and I think that's really concerning. Now, I think the measures put in place on county properties have been good and they seem to work at preventing the spread of disease within their facilities and among county employees. But when you're looking at the entire county, I'm not sure the same could be said. So as a commissioner, I'd want to work closely with and reasonably empower, uh, public health officials, our public health officer, Dr. Station, who Dave mentioned, um, the medical community and the emergency response team to do what's necessary and what makes sense based on scientific and medical evidence and facts. So, you know, short of a vaccine, our goal should be to eradicate this disease by stopping its spread. And the sooner we can do that, the sooner we can get back to functioning a little more normally as a society, however normal we functioned before. Um, and I do want the economy to be moving forward and I want the economy to be robust. Um, but the truth is, you're not going to have much of an economy if people are too sick to work or, or to, uh, patronize and, and buy from local businesses and, and services.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. And, uh, last, we'll hear from Lauren on this final, uh, question. Uh, Lauren, how do you feel Sweetwater County and the commission can continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic?
So I believe that we absolutely must continue to small, support our businesses, our small businesses. And I believe that our businesses have done an incredible job of really quickly adapting, um, their business practices to operate safely and as safely as possible and get their doors open. Um, our community has also done an excellent job of supporting these businesses and reaching out, um, to do whatever they can, whether it's order out or delivery, things like that. So I want to commend our businesses and our community, um, on really supporting each other. Um, I believe that we also must really focus on supporting those services that, um, we may need during this time. Um, mental health is a very huge concern at this point in time. And I think that we really need to focus on those services and be able to provide the services throughout our community so that we can remain strong. Um, we must go to our state, um, and, and access those federal dollars that are being handed out. This is an incredible opportunity. Um, this is kind of the silver lining in all of this economic downturn, um, and really moving forward in accessing those funding, that, that funding from the CARES Act. Um, there's conversation that there may be some additional funding. I know there's a lot of restrictions around what we have currently, but we do have plans in place. We are working through the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, um, to come up with some funding applications along those lines. Um, there's currently broadband opportunity as well for technology and connectivity, um, issues that, you know, we have for our children and for our small businesses, that would be a great opportunity. So we, we just must continue to move forward, working on rebuilding our economy, um, and continuing to support each other and to help move things forward.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for all those thoughtful answers to those questions. And, uh, Gary's going to lead us through the last part of the, the forum here.
Yeah. Before we get to the end, we just, for Dave and I, and also Kaylee, who's going to work hard and put these together, uh, we wanted to thank you. Uh, we know that your time is being requested by a lot of other groups and, um, you know, we're just happy that you jumped on with us to, uh, answer a few questions. And, um, as you know, we'll do our best to inform the public and, and so they can get to know all of you, right? So, um, here at the end, we're going to give everybody two minutes and just, if we're just going to give you the chance to give a final pitch. And why should the people of Sweetwater County elect you to be their next county commissioner? And we're going to start with Joe.
Well, again, um, I'd like to thank Sweetwater Now for hosting, uh, Dave and Gary for being such, uh, good moderators and asking such good questions. You know, I also want to express my gratitude to the other candidates for their willingness to run. You know, I'm glad to say that I, I've known many of them for some time, some of them are here. Um, in fact, Lynn and I sat next to each other in high school in Centurions. Uh, I don't remember who was better, probably her. Um, but, and of course, I've known Wally for many years and I've always appreciated our conversations, even when, you know, I don't agree, we can always find common ground in our appreciation of Sweetwater County in Wyoming. And of course, Dave, um, Mary and, and Mark, they've all been public office holders and they share that same admiration for our region. So it takes a lot to run and I'm grateful that their willingness about, uh, for their willingness to take that on. Uh, you know, I think about my great, great grandfather, Louis Satherla, because he came here from Norway in late 1800s. He didn't have much, um, but the UP was offering jobs, they were offering opportunity and that was, he, that's what he was looking for. I don't think he expected to find it in a bottom of a coal mine necessarily when he got off that boat, um, from Norway, but he did. And that opportunity led to a lot of others and that enabled him to open his own business, um, to raise his family and have a really good life here in Sweetwater County. And, you know, is that same opportunity that was available to him in the 19th century available in the 21st? That's a big question. We're at a crossroads, folks, and we can't keep doing things the same way. Uh, life is changing rapidly here in Sweetwater County and we can't just react. We can react or we can plan. Now, I'm for the latter and I think most other people are too. So I think if you value the idea of creating a strategic path forward, uh, framework, move forward, uh, for our county, I'm your candidate. I think if you want to be more involved and have more access to county government, I'm I think if you want to be more involved and have more access to county government, I'm your candidate. And I think that if you want to ensure that public hands remain in public hand, lands remain in public hands uh for this generation and those to come, I'm your candidate. What's at stake in twenty twenty? Well, only everything, right? Um, every election, they say, is the most important, and that's of our lifetimes. And that's especially true, I think, in twenty twenty. So I can hit the ground running. I can put my skills. And uh, yeah, I appreciate the time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lauren, same question. Why should the people of Sweetwater County elect you to be their next county commissioner?
Sweetwater County is an incredible place to live, play, and work. And in my view, it's unlike, unlike anywhere else because of the incredible innovation, dedication, and perseverance of our residents. We solve problems. We work together to fill gaps in services, and we collectively support our local community and businesses. Sweetwater County has given me and my family incredible opportunities, and we've been so blessed to call it our home. We're also so very lucky to have access to the hiking, hunting, fishing, camping, boating, and off-roading like we do. Growing up in Farsen gave me the opportunity to experience those things since I was a child, which has impacted me in many positive ways. My husband and I love our careers and are very excited to continue to live, work, play, and give back in this awesome area. I look forward to continuing to work alongside Sweetwater County residents, rolling up my sleeves and taking on the projects that matter the most based on the unique needs in southwestern Wyoming. I humbly ask for your support when you cast your vote this year. And you can contact me on Facebook. I have two different Facebook options. Uh, Lauren Schoenfeld County Commissioner or Lauren Schoenfeld. Uh, my email address is lingabrand@gmail.com. And please vote for me, Lauren Schoenfeld for County Commissioner.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, Mary, you're next. Um, same question. Why should the people of Sweetwater County elect you to be their next county commissioner?
Well, I, I'm running on the campaign platform, and I do have the experience. I've worked side by side with commissioners for twenty-one years, actually ahead of them with uh the, the, the public lands. We were ahead of them as a cooperator with Jack Mall Hillson moving into those uh federal plans. Uh, I've led several processes. We did with the county's funding. We did a major roads assessment. Uh, so I've already, that one is about to be released to the county. It's a major database layer. Uh, so I, I feel like I'm already in the, in the game. It's just that I've been behind the scenes and decided it was time to, to step up where I could have more of an impact. So I've been doing the work. I'll continue to do the work, and I think we need to, it's going to be tough times. And I think we all need to work together. And our greatest asset are our people. And uh, my greatest goal is maintaining our quality of life in this county. So I would appreciate your vote. I have Facebook, Mary Toman twenty twenty, Mary Toman twenty twenty at gmail dot com is my email. And thank you, Sweetwater Now, for this opportunity today.
Okay, Dave, uh, same question uh here at the end. Why should the people of Sweetwater County elect you to be their next county commissioner?
What kind of uh prompted me to run was uh when, when the governor of the state of Wyoming said he could lay off every state employee, he could release every prisoner from our penitentiary system, and he still wouldn't be able to make the budget. That made me understand that Sweetwater, Sweetwater County has got some concerns and problems. If you're wanting a person that is honest, that has the courage to make tough decisions, uh, vote for me. If you want a person that has done the job, uh, whether it's as sheriff uh or as a chairman on the board of parole, uh, someone that you can trust for the future, then vote for me. Um, I will give this one hundred percent. I'm retired now and more than willing to make this a full-time job, not just a day-to-day job, not just once or twice a month's job. This would be a full-time job for me. And I want this county to, to survive. I want this county to grow strong. I am not a native of Sweetwater County. I am a native of the state of Wyoming. My heart truly belongs in Wyoming. And I have to say, what's been good for Sweetwater County has always been good for Wyoming. It's time for Wyoming to dig into their pockets, break out that rainy day account, and pay some of these counties that have been picking up the bill for so many years. Because we are, we grew, we grew large because of the economic opportunity we had, because of the mineral extraction that we had. And now we're going to be one of the hardest counties because it's dying on us. It is just dropping out from underneath us. You know, it'd be, it'd be interesting if it was just one industry. The only industry I can think of right off, or right offhand that isn't really suffering is SF hospice. But everything else is just dropping out, including tourism. I am asking for your vote. Please vote for Dave Gray. If you need to get ahold of me, you get it through the clerk's office. It's on file. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. All right, Dave, let's uh, why don't you finish this off?
Yeah, well, we again want to thank all the candidates who, who joined us tonight on uh the Zoom forum. I think it's not the most convenient way to hold a forum, but we do appreciate your time. And um, again, we, we need to thank our community partners who, who are making this possible. General Wyoming and Genesis Alkali were very gracious to, to step up and sponsor uh all of our political coverage, both through the primary and through the general election. So thanks to them very much. And again, we want to thank Joe Barbuto, Lauren Schoenfeld, Mary Toman, and Dave Gray, who joined us tonight on uh the forum. And good luck to all of you in your campaigns and coming up in the primary. You all did a fantastic job tonight. We appreciate your thoughtful answers, and good luck to all of you.